Okay. We will open the planning board meeting for October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. Um, we are recording this and it will be posted online. If anybody else is recording it, find yourself to let us know. Hearing nothing, um. We will move on to the town planners reports, seven o'clock.
Thank you very much, Chair. Okay, a couple of uh. On ongoing business items, both on and off the agenda. You can make sure that it's fine to uh one fourteen Berkshire Avenue. Uh, projects along Berkshire and tobacco road, it must be. It must have appeared on the market because I've received a number of phone calls from interested parties looking to see if that was something they could uh divide. Uh, and to to house lots, which would be generally consistent with the fabric of the neighborhood, um, but. Uh, as it sits right now, that's not an option without pursuit of generous variances. So we relate that much to those parties. Um. I have an information with Alexandra from our Leveque Associates office. We have a few um. Earth excavation special permits uh coming up, one likely to be appended to the one hundred drive application, uh so. Uh, tonight's agenda and the other would be the next step for the um. One Wallaway eighteen Hudson Drive um project. You may recall there essentially extending into uh a hill. Uh, in the back of that property to accommodate the long layout of a new building. So. The just that discussion comes down to the fact that the earth excavation special permit. Um, as has been interpreted in the past and verified with the building inspector, if you're exporting a thousand cubic yards. Then it's applicable, right? Uh, essentially the thousand cubic yard is the key figure right there. But outside of that particular figure, there's a really geared towards mineral mining. And I'll give a nod to the fact that when you have moved around that much material, your consideration has to be given to. Uh, the change um particularly as it may affect about any properties. Uh, the big difference. Uh, between a mineral mining project uh and. A site plan uh approval. That we would process is that the mineral mining project has certain setbacks. Uh, and limitations associated where you'd want to have or many buffer to a mining project. Uh, so in a nutshell, uh, we'll be. Actually, say we, the building inspector uh will be issuing correspondence of relevant associates acknowledging um. That for a project that incorporates a site plan uh that deals. Particular restrictions for earth excavation special permits would not be directly applicable. Uh, right, um, speaking of which. The Tilcon excavation site in the Hudson Drive, we received an application uh to incorporate the solar project. Um, into their overall permit will be opening up that hearing at the November first meeting. I've had discussions with, I suppose, numerous parties, both the Crest reconstruction and um with. Your base in fury regarding and picking up on the discussion we had the last meeting over the Greens West. Building towards street acceptance. Um. After conferring with town council, I did share a document that kind of breaks down, should say kind of, it does break down the timeline generally associated with uh submittals. Uh, and making sure that uh. A developer uh is preparing adequate information for the select for to receive this petition uh for acceptance. So they can refer to us and so on and so forth. That's a little bit of an offshoot of the discussion regarding any interim um. Acceptance is no removal responsibilities, uh, but that is just a part of my discussions. I want to let you know that it's. It continues uh and you'll likely to see it remain on our agenda um as we have discussions. I want to make sure we go back to the board for at least our responsibilities.
Can you shoot that document over to me?
Sure, absolutely.
You may have already done it, but I guess.
I I know we had a few pickups, so maybe maybe uh stuck in the mind, but uh. Everybody uh has a copy of a letter from a pretty parker on behalf of the prepared videos. Uh, that'll be a point of discussion, I'm sure, for the um. We actually state lock hearing, just wanted to make sure that the mention of you stop by the office, we got that off and uh. Back for a little bit. Uh, last thing in the business is I'm allowed now to try to remind me at the end of this meeting that uh. Um, let you go and I think he needs to sign a form that was submitted by. Our Leveque Associates related to planning board acknowledgement. Um, of the chap ninety one application that was submitted for one forty one common. Well, having said that out loud, hopefully that's my triggering device right here to make sure that gets uh signed tonight while we're all in the same space.
I've already forgotten that, so I'm.
I'm counting on everybody in this room and and the papers out in front of me that hopefully will make it happen.
Okay.
Uh, and that's, let me have a few people in here. Thank you. Everybody that stuck in the lady room is now. Okay, come on up to my comments.
All right, so uh seven oh five, public comment. If anybody has anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda, please, this is your time to speak up. Seeing nothing, we will move on to seven ten P M. Public hearing. Special permit site plan approval and common driveway application. Uh, nine eight Sawgrass Lane, which is lot fifteen and nineteen Sawgrass Lane, which is lot eighteen. Um. And we have Rob here for that.
Change between.
Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, how are you?
How are you?
I'm great, I'm great. Um, is Mr. Hamlin there in the audience?
Yep.
Great. Um, please, this is the board. What I'd like to do is uh share my screen and show you a couple, couple plans here. Let me see if I can do that.
Rob, give me one second, I'll get you a little bit of that.
Thank you, sir.
There you go, should be all set.
Awesome, nice job. See, when I'm at home, I get to wear a hat, all informal, the dogs in the back. All right, uh, here we go, so. Okay, um, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start out with the um. The subdivision plan, so as part of our subdivision, the west side of um, I guess it's the uh Greens of Southwest. Wes, I'm hoping that, um, we had, we had two, we had an opportunity to do two. I'm gonna call them F R D lots because they're not technically conventional lots. We had the opportunity to do lot fifteen and lot eighteen um that had frontage on College Highway. Um, we left the strip here to access that, and then we planned on doing, we called it a common drive, planned on doing a common drive. Um, so I think to be, to be honest, I don't know how detailed we really looked at the common drive regs at that point. Looks like they came out in fifteen, this was done in seventeen, um, so, you know, realistically, um. You know, had to look at the common drives, drive regulations more recently, uh, hold on, guys. Be a yellow lab barking if I didn't let. So the, so the common, so the common drive that we're showing here is just, you know, kind of graphically shown with the building envelopes that we were planning. Um, so as we get into, you know, the actual development of these lots, obviously, Mr. Hamlin's uh got two uh custom homes that he's building for folks. Um, but he had asked us, I believe it was fairly early in the summer, to file. Um, and this is the plan you'll see here, but for him to file um for, or for, sorry, for us to file for him a common drive. That really showed the, the access and then that we now, you can see that we had a little bit more developed footprints for those lots, because we knew what houses were being constructed. Um, so John, um, your planner, he's done a great job at reviewing this, um. I think he reviewed it with town council as well. There's a couple um issues related to, I guess, what I would call um. The construction related requirements that for a common driveway that we really kind of um. Left ourselves a little bit too narrow on, um, so as we look at the plan. Can you guys still see the plan?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll see that we, you know, what we did is because they're not, they're not. Um, because they're not um. Flag lots, because it's a co- uh, it was, it was a, I don't wanna call it convention, but because it was an F R V lot that had frontage on College Highway. We didn't need to um re- uh, provide a specific amount of frontage along the roadway. Um, we have thirty linear feet along Sawgrass, but if we were a flag lot, we'd be forty. Required to be forty, if we were in a state lot, we would be required to be fifty. Um. So because we didn't have a specific requirement, we basically left what we thought was ample room or driveway um. Along fronted because it's a curve, it was thirty feet, and then you dimension it, it's twenty seven point one eight feet. Um, so, long story short, based on your current common drive regulations, um. It appears as though certain items can be waived, and I didn't get a chance to talk to John, but it sounds like. The waivers we requested, some of them are potential, one of them uh is potentially allowable, but but that. The town council felt that. And I'm, and John, tell me if I'm reading, reading your email right, that the dimensional requirements. Maybe could not be waived, but that the construction requirements could, and maybe the difference between where it said dimensional and. Construction in these um. When a part of that page, and then the second part was like um. You know, construction standards can be what kind of planning work. We, we were under the impression that both could be, but is that, am I, am I understanding that correct uh through the chair?
Uh, you are understanding that correctly. I mean, it, the sort of. Nomenclature that I have in my head that sort of guides me on that is um having not talked to town council, I've talked to John about it, but. Is that, you know, Board of Appeals is the foot and inches board, we're the, we're the use board, right? So um, if you're requesting um. Something that goes against what the measurements are in the bylaws, that has to go in front of the Board of Appeals for variance versus us, which is dealing with. Um, stuff outside of that. Got it. They have a pretty narrow scope of, of what they do, but that is, I think, within their scope of what they do.
Yep, um, so understanding that, I thought of a creative idea. I have nothing. Let me, let me let this creative idea rip here. So here's the question. If I were to ask, so right now, there's, in my, my humble opinion, there are two. Uh, construction related requirements. Um, obviously, it's gotta be paved, we're not, I'm not counting though if that is one of the two. But it also uh is required to be a certain width, uh, probably fifteen feet, uh, which we're requiring, we're requesting a waiver from. And in addition to that, if there's a requirement for three foot shoulders, now given most common drives that we would run into, um. You know, we might be having to have a culvert crossing, or there might be big fire apparatus that can't get to the lot in certain cases. Would be able to get to the lot by that common drive. Um, you know, we understand that that, you know, those shoulders would be, you know, important just in case that there's outriggers or anything that needs to be, you know. Placed on, so that said, the thought is this. I know this sounds crazy, but it seems to me that if we can only waive the requirements for driveway truck. And John, uh, visualize this in your head, and actually, everybody if you can. The thought would be if we went to a seven foot wide driveway. And then had three foot, um. We'll call it three foot uh shoulders, we still have the shoulders. So we did, we paved the driveway of seven feet, we paved the three foot shoulders of seven feet. That would give us eleven foot driveway. And then we could still have the um setback from the property lines, because I think the big issue here is the setback from the property line. So it's essentially the same, it's almost the width, instead of twelve, it would be eleven. And then we would basically still maintain. So we'd have seven. Plus three and three, right? But am I saying a lot that right, John?
That's where I lost your map, because that's thirteen in my mind, but I could be wrong.
So if it's seven. Plus ten and ten.
Right, that gets you to twenty seven, right, Rob?
Gets me to the twenty seven, but we actually paved the shoulders. For the driveway, seven feet proper, but we paved the shoulders.
But you need shoulders of four to make the fifteen.
Uh, I think they're three and three requirement.
Uh.
It would be, it'd be seven and six for a total of eleven, right? Well, you wouldn't count the six because those are the shoulders. The driveway technically has to be ten feet off. It's kind of semantics, you know, it's the same, it's the same driveway we showed on the um. definitive, it's really just a way to, you know. Be able to waive the proper items as opposed to going to the Z B A for a dimensional permit.
Trying to attempt this.
All right.
Yeah. Hold on, just.
Two thirty.
So. Mark was okay with the fifteen feet waiver. He was not okay with the easement waiver and the. Ten foot setbacks, is that right?
Exactly.
Okay.
So if we, so the thought process is we would get the easement, I think we only need a few feet, right? So we could figure out how to secure that. Um, and then the idea would be if we had a seven foot wide driveway, the. The setback could be from. This the edge of the seven foot wide driveway, which can give us ten feet on either side. And then we either gravel or pave the uh. The shoulders. Doesn't say, doesn't say that you can't pave the shoulders.
Yeah, that's right, that's exactly right.
I'm just wondering when you, when you wanted to be a lawyer and what, and how you gave up on that dream, Rob, is what I wanna, is what I wanna know.
He's a landscape architect.
He's a salesman. I was, you know what, I, I gotta tell you, I was, you know, so. It's one of those things where you have, we have folks that, you know, are, are planning moving in, I don't wanna, you know, somebody to get out of the, you know. There's a lot of reasons why we wanna make sure this works out.
So here's. Tell me this before we start to go down the path of. Of. Trying to fit it in here under this idea. Um. I mean, I, I don't, I think this can still be done tonight with in a. Assuming that the board agrees and a permit issued with a condition that a variance be obtained. Um. I also, you know, there's been no objection from any departments as far as the safety or anything else, I don't believe, and so I. I can't speak for the Board of Appeals, but I, I see it as unlikely that it would be rejected there. It's not asking for a huge. Variance um uh on a, on an already completed project, um, and it's simply just. Um. Uh, a minor change to the setbacks, if you wanna call it that, um, from the properties. Um, it's not like there won't be. Uh, I don't wanna call it vegetation, but at least something between the driveway and the, and the property lines. Like the driveway is going up to the property lines. So, uh, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't see much resistance, though I have, like I said, I can't speak for them. Um, but it doesn't seem like that's a huge process to go through. Rather than sort of trying to twist it through here just to get the waivers, and we, we would still have to. Write up a decision and vote on it at, you know, a meeting subsequent to now. Um. So I, I'm not sure you're gaining much by, by trying to do that rather than just. Get the variance um a- a- as well as the permit from here, and you, you can go to the Board of Appeals with a permit that has. You know, the condition in it, um, so they'll know what our opinion is.
So, you know, in your decision, it might say that, you know, you know, you obviously, you wouldn't have a problem with it, because the Board of Appeals is, you know, so, yeah. No, I actually, Mike, I, I. Uh, I think you're right. I think that's the cleanest way to do it. Um. I know that there's a closing in November, so I guess. The only other thing would be.
Missed that part.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess my thought is for Mr. Hamlin. I guess he could technically have one driveway, I'm sorry, it could be a regular driveway to whatever. Uh, I'm hoping it's the House of the North, is that accurate?
I could have one drive as a lead.
Right, which one is closing in November, do you?
Uh, fifteen, the one that actually owns the driveway.
Oh, good. Hey, something.
The right hand.
So.
Well, go ahead, I'll listen.
So the, the thought processes of that, and I was hoping that was the case, the thought process would be that he could get, you know, a normal driveway, get occupancy in November. Um, the common drive, if you guys were to issue the uh decision, I could take that to the Z B As soon as human move up. And um ideally get a common drive. Um, you know, wrapped up by the time, well, I guess you would have a planning board decision and you just have to get the Z B A there. It takes, I don't think there's, I don't know if there's an appeal period or not that would affect it, I think, for it. Pretty, pretty quickly, so.
I mean, but the appeal period is at your own risk, right? I mean, that's.
Agreed, yeah.
So. Um. Yeah, I mean, I, and I, and, you know, our meetings are on the first and the twenty ninth, so um, I'm not. You know, we'd have to crank it out to get it done by the first, so it may even get deferred to the twenty ninth potentially. Um, with a written decision, so. Um. Um, you know, that they would have to, a written decision that would try to do the. Be very creative argument that you had suggested would take some time, I think. Um, but I think doing it. Again, assuming the board votes in favor of it with that condition. That's a decision that can be drafted up pretty quickly, voted on at the next meeting, which is November first. You guys can go to the Board of Appeals whenever that meets, I don't, honestly don't know their schedule, um, and. Have something done reasonably quickly, I think, um, and it's done, you know, what is sort of the more conventional way, let's put it that way, um. Right, you know, certainly appreciate the creativity, but I think the conventional way is probably the, the better way to go.
Yeah, Mr. Hamlin through, uh, through the chair, Mr. Hamlin, are you um comfortable with that?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. All right, so. I think you let it stand and then um appreciate the, the work around this, I know it's.
All right, so um. Just so everybody on the board is clear. The waiver is being requested, um, so there's a requirement of. An easement area, so the entire area that this is running through has to be thirty feet, it is twenty seven point one eight feet currently. Um. The compacted surface has to be a minimum of fifty feet wide. And um. Which, is it fifteen on the plan, Rob?
Well, we're requesting twelve, requesting twelve.
Oh, e- even, even putting aside, even if you got, went to get the variance, you're requesting twelve.
Yeah, that seemed logical to us, um.
All right, so, so they're, so the one waiver they're requesting, which we. According to town council, have the ability to grant is the variance from fifteen feet compacted service to twelve feet compacted service. The third waiver request is that when you are. Um. The driveways need to be set back from any flooding property line by ten feet. So there are property lines on both sides of this, so you need ten foot setbacks on both. Um, so you would end up with, they actually would need thirty five feet total, they'd need the fifteen foot, and then they need ten on either side. Um, so, which I think the math is correct, but that's thirty five feet, that's, um, so we would be. If, if we accept their waiver request of fifteen to twelve, that would get it down to thirty two, but that would still be outside of the twenty seven point one eight. So, um, but otherwise, it's a pretty standard common driveway for these two properties, which was already discussed and considered when we approved the subdivision. Um.
Wasn't there another op- uh, option of getting an easement from the butters?
Um, I suppose that is, but that's a pretty complicated. You'd have to have maintenance agreements, you'd have to have. And you're gonna have a maintenance agreement anyways, but you have more parties to the maintenance agreement, right? Uh, because you have the easement involved, um. So I, I mean.
They need a less than three foot easement, right?
No, they need, uh, well.
They need thirty feet, they have twenty seven point one eight.
They need thirty two feet wide. If we granted the waiver, and so I mean, five feet, and that's assuming that the driveway is off center. If the driveway was on center, they would need two and a half feet from either side. Um, so. I just think that's a little bit more complicated than just getting a variance for. A setback, a setback issue, which I don't think is. Any kind of safety or, or other. Problem, um.
Did the. Subdivision plan we approved, did it show the dimensions of this common driveway?
I don't think it had, I don't remember seeing a width.
Not a good mention, but.
Yeah.
Shows the frontage figure that's consistent once on the plan, uh, and the other sidelines. Just the common, just the fact that we were looking at a common driveway for those two lot.
That has.
Which is a good thing, since we don't want too many curb cuts on College Highway.
Shows this is the dimensional one, just definitely. Um, well, no, I take that back.
Oh.
It just has the wrong width.
Do you see the thirty one, zero one on there?
Yeah.
So that, that's the frontage measurement.
Oh, right, right, no, no, you're right, you're right, yep, 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 got it, okay. So it doesn't, yeah, you mentioned that when it comes up with it. Okay. So that was the issue of that, um. All right, um, any? Questions or comments from board members?
Mike, on number four says here, um, who should be completed by a director of public works, do we have that?
Um. That's with the, that's, that's subsequent to the print of the issue.
Says no building permit should be issued until the director of public works.
Right, that's.
Has to prove the shared portion. Of the common driveway, so we need written notice. Our evidence that it went to the building inspector, so it did issue a building permit.
No, but that's in the permit, that's the permit uh process, which would be outside of our. Okay, area, that would be when they go to. Kyle, they need to show that they've already um had, talked to the D P W about improvement on it, so I think that's more of a condition on getting the building permit. Than goods for anything that we fired issuing a special. At least the way I read it. And that to me, that's just that sort of. Check that's built in uh the sort of. Have someone else look at it later on.
There's no problem with the butters on either side, so.
No, we got no comments from either of the butters, it's advertised as a public.
They were notified.
Figured out the notice issue, right, but the uh.
Some a little more reassuring.
Not gonna lie.
Yes, no, I mean. What would be the um? Property addresses, you guys know what the? No, 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 but what would be the, do you know what the property addresses would be for the two that are?
Uh it would be eleven and seven.
So they got notice.
I know the notice went out because all the properties that we have in here, we got new sheet letters for them.
Alright, it was an issue with a non-approved subdivision, getting it to the actual properties versus the entire subdivision as a single entity. Um but according to the butters notice that was filed here. It does include all. Alright, um. Any other board questions before I get into um the comments from the town officials that we.
Not yet, I'm curious what the public safety field folks think about the narrow width.
Fires. Reminded us. Yep, so I will be reaching out to.
Alright, and we can put that, well, we'll be voting. All I want to do is close it today and then we can. Um, well, uh maybe we'll leave it open and then close it at the next meeting. So that we can get in police because Paul Miles lives in the neighborhood, so he can't do it, so that's. Um, so.
Yeah, and they should be made aware, of course, they would be, right, would seven foot wide.
Yeah, I mean. Fired. So they reviewed the plan with twelve?
Yes.
Alright, so we have a email from um. Uh Richard's panelists, uh deputy chief of self fire department indicating we have reviewed the plans. Committed for the special permit on South West Lane and have no issues with the plans that submitted. And then. DPW comments. DPW review the common driveway, um special permit application for nine A nine B South West Lane. Uh have fallen comments, the applicant has requested several waivers due to the width of the access strip. Appears that the original subdivision layout do not account for the required thirty foot width of the entire length of the strip. Rather the entrance at South West Lane is thirty feet wide, but due to the angle at the road entrance, the actual width of the access strip is twenty seven point one eight. As a result, the applicant is seeking relief on the width of the access strip setback from adjacent properties and driveway width. BPW is amenable to accepting waiver requests. Um the location of all underground utilities, water, electric and gas to the two properties should be shown within the access strip. Copy of the recorded maintenance agreement should be provided to the town prior to issuance of the operating permits, so those are the comments from BPW. Uh and those are all.
That's cool.
Okay. Having read those, any other comments or questions from board members before I open it up to town officials and the public?
So just so I understand, they're asking, or I think we're going down the path of a twelve foot width. Uh that's what we can.
Allowing for a waiver. From fifteen to twelve. And then granting a special permit for the common driveway. Um subject to. A variance being obtained for those other.
Setback, setbacks, okay, and it still have the three foot shoulders on each side.
It would be a total pave width of twelve feet. The shoulder thing was, that's, that's a different, that's a sort of different. Way around it, that's.
Those have proposed seven foot with the shoulders paved and make it, yeah, so there still will be some kind of shoulders, I'm just thinking. Two opposing vehicles are not going to get by each other at twelve feet. I assume that's why the eighteen feet, you can get two cars past each other.
Well, but you're only required to have fifteen feet on a common drive.
I'm assuming you're doing some kind of. My driveway is eighteen feet wide, so I know that that's about right for.
So there's a um a length on here where it triggers the requirement for those bypass lanes uh that we have been. Uh for this particular proposal. It being relatively straight, uh and like I I shown at least the the submitted plan, there are. Dimensions for the shoulders to be constructed, I think it proposed at three versus. I I think for the purpose. As long as it's stabilized and it's a gentle transition, you know, going off into a big range ditch, of which there are none at this particular. Uniquely straight forward side.
And there is a requirement. Alright, any other board questions or comments? Alright, uh any town officials have any questions or comments? Or none, um any public questions or comments?
I do, I do have one.
Yeah, just uh name and.
Just looking at this and and with other lots on there, is this something that we're gonna have to do for? Like the other. Flag lots like nineteen. Just so that I know, so that I can get it earlier.
I don't think so, um it's different requirement, but go ahead, you can.
Twenty and nineteen were originally paired in the. And twenty now, I think, has its access from. We addressed that the last.
Okay.
Question here, so right now, there's only. A single driveway serving.
As long as it's a single driveway at that width, I'm good.
Yeah, and so the flag lots have their own requirement, I don't think there's an issue with those. Okay. Um, any, any other public questions or comments? Alright, so. Why don't we um you'll talk to the chief? If you could, this week or beginning of next, the next meeting is next Tuesday, right? Um, so why don't we continue this the next Tuesday, at which point we'll get, take that into evidence. Close the hearing and then we can move on to a. To a vote on it um on November first, so we'll put it on it um. That's added a sore. I give that twenty minutes, so why don't we put it on seven thirty, so put it on at seven thirty on November first. Um and then just. In case we don't get to it during the course of, we have to defer a little bit, um or we need to. Week anything. Throw in an entry out of the routine business for the decision. In case we have to separate it for any reason, um at least have that there, so um seven thirty November first, do I hear a motion to continue? This public hearing to seven thirty on November first, Marcus Phelps will move. Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I, Marcus Phelps, I. Oh, hold on. What I did, what I failed to do is um designate Jessica, um just Sutton's on here, so. Uh uh Jessica has been designated uh as a member, voting member on this um. In case there's any issues in the next meeting.
Yep.
So before we do that, alright, so why don't we do a motion uh? To do it again, motion to continue to uh November first at seven thirty, Marcus.
Second.
Alright, roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I, Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
Alright. Thank you. Alright.
Thank you.
Seven twenty in planning board time. We have the special permit site plan approval, wellhead protection, district special permit, earth excavation special permit and. Stormwater management for permits for one Hudson Drive. You're gonna see some magic, how I get us back on schedule in this agenda. We have received a request for continuance. To continue. Did Rob jump off? He did. Alexandra, do you have a sense of um how much time is needed? Can this be put on for November first, or should we put it on for the end of November?
Um I do have a sense, I believe that we should have everything to you, hopefully by the end of, I would like to hope this week, um if not. By Monday, so if you would please put it on the November first meeting, that would be great.
Do some. So.
The payment.
No, hold on, I'm just trying to think, we need to um. We need to open it. So if you could grab the notice coming. And. Just because we.
So it's still.
It only gets, it gets something added storage, it's, the sun gonna have to um. Uh is it in, was it in this? After um accuse himself.
He did in the past, yes.
On Andy's?
Yes.
Alright, so it's a non-issue on that anyways. So let's, um I just want to open it because it's been advertised for today, we'll open it. Alright, so we will open the he- hearing. Notices here by given in accordance with the provision of master law chapter forty A section eleven, that the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two at seven. Twenty P M via Zoom and in the land use hearing room at four fifty four College Highway, Suffolk, Mass. On application by additional attic colored storage ain't. Uh care of Andrew J. Reardon, Gordon amended. Uh special permit and site plan approval, wellhead protection, district special permit, earth excavation special permit and stormwater management permit for property located at one Hudson Drive. Don't industrial restricted, property shown on accessories map sixty seven parcel two, the applicant proposes to construct six self-storage buildings. With associated site improvements in accordance with the code of Suffolk zoning bylaws, chapter one eighty three, chapter one eighty five, sections nine, ten. Nineteen, twenty two and thirty three. Zoom it, information is provided, a copy of the application, the plans may be inspected by contacting the town owner, John Garter, Garter at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time designated, Michael Doherty, Jeff, or the public planning board. Alright, um just in case anybody, is anybody here for that particular? Uh public hearing that wants to offer any comments here today. Okay, anybody online? Okay, so why don't I, do I hear a motion?
Do we want to designate?
Uh let's designate. Designate Jessica as a voting member on this one. And. Uh do I hear a motion to continue this application to seven forty five? On November first.
Marcus Phelps will move. Richard Singer, second.
Or we'll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I. Richard Singer, I.
Okay. So that's all set, we are back on schedule. See how long we stay on that, uh seven forty five. State law special permit, it's like plan approval application for. Um, well, I've also wrote at Meadow Lane, map thirty eight, parcel eleven, continued public hearing. As a for guys, alright, so um. We received revised plan, correct? We did. You have those there? Can you bring it up on um? About that, alright. Um, so Alexandra, before I turn to you, let me just so that it can read into the record. Um I mean essentially this adds in the outbuildings. Not sure if there's anything else to it, but she can, Alexandra can clarify that, but uh there we have an email from Randy Brown. Indicating that BPW reviewed this revised plan and does not have any additional comments beyond what was already provided. So uh there's nothing new from BPW for this new plan, Alexandra, do you um wanna? Tell us about this new plan?
Uh I'll keep it short and brief for the record, first of all, my name is Alexandra Chiketti from Allevak Associates, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Mister Oleg Kolyak, um as discussed at the last meeting on October fourth, the planning board made a motion to continue this public hearing. To be provided with a revised plan showing the precise location of the outbuilding. Um the barn, which is just one building, has been placed on the site plan exactly where it's going to be placed on the lot. Um the applicant's hopeful that at this point in time, the lingering comments and questions have been addressed, um and out at that, I'll. Transitioning it back to the board for any comments or questions.
Thank you. Um, board members, anybody have any? Questions or comment that they want to offer about this? New plan or about the application in general before we. Move to public comments.
The uh plan. Shows emergency vehicles accessed. Sort of in the center of the plan, is that something on the original one, John?
I would have to look to double check, if I recall correctly, they.
What that means, it seems like it's quite a ways over for turnaround, but. And there's dotted. Dotted lines around it. So you hear. Seems like it's quite long for any kind of a turnaround that would be needed.
Um if I may through the chair, I just wanted to add that that um area has been there from the very first site plan that we submitted.
That's what I thought, um.
Okay, do we know what it's for? Did the fire department come in on that at all? We just said nothing specific to that.
So hit scratcher. I complain about more, okay? Hmm, it's like you can't really complain about more.
Well, the disturbance to the property outside, true.
Um, alright, any other board questions or comments? Okay, um. I always debate whether I gotta read something. Uh, of course. Is that a vol- your voluntary entry to the office or whatever?
Nobody will understand, um, with my mask on, so.
Uh, before I turn it over to, um. Comments, we received a letter from attorney Michael Parker. Indicating that this office is counsel to Frederick F. Filios, the owner and resident of the single-family dwelling at twenty-three Meadow Lane in Suffolk. This particular lot has been described as lot number forty on a subdivision plan approved by this board on the fourth day of April nineteen ninety five and recorded on the Hammond County Registry of Dees and Book of Plans two ninety-three and page sixty-two. We understand that application had been made by one Holy Cleat to create or establish a so-called estate lot with motor vehicle access to Meadow Lane. Page section one eighty-five. On behalf of the above named owner whose property lies adjacent to the proposed motor vehicle access on a bust the Cleat property, we respectfully object to the recognition of access uh, to the proposed estate lot via Meadow Lane on the following grounds. First, the subdivision plan referenced above and approved in nineteen ninety-five contains this waiver. A waiver of the requirement for the maximum length eight hundred feet of a dead-end street has been granted to allow for the extension of Meadow Lane to service lots thirty-four to thirty-six and thirty-nine to forty-four. It is to be noted that Suffolk Planning Board and extending the minimum length of Meadow Lane specifically limited the benefit of that extension to certain numbered lots within the subdivision plan. The underlying waiver authority. Master of Law Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one R, and exercise is for those instances where the public interest is served and not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law. Citing Woodstock versus Planning Board of Medfield fifty-four, Mass. Appeals Court eight thirty-one, eight two thousand and two written decision. In applying its discretionary authority in nineteen ninety-five, the board must have determined that if the proposed extension of Meadow Lane were limited to the lots shown on the plan, it would not burn in fire and safety vehicles or, among other things, provide a straightaway to allow car travel at high speed in an emergency area. Having so specifically limited the benefit of the nineteen ninety-five waiver, there is no other reasonable conclusion but that twenty twenty-two proposed waivers inconsistent with the nineteen ninety-five limitation endorsed on the plan. Board could have but did not permit benefit the property to the south of lots thirty-nine, forty. The nineteen ninety-five extension that only numbered lots on Meadow Lane must be viewed as arbitrary if it may be expanded at will. Code sections and waivers and terms issued by the board are intended to mean what they say. Builders and homeowners elect are entitled to rely on the unaffilled orders of the board. In this case, a provision that Meadow Lane would not be extended further here a lot thirty-nine and forty. Person buying a lot within the subject subdivision by recent expectancy, traffic within that subdivision would be confined to the owners and their visitors. Second, the individual seeking state lots of Meadow Lane is not without alternate points of access the northerly boundary we are crossing live within the center line of Malavanda Mouse Stone Way. The abandonment by the municipality may end the public right of usage and all obligations of maintenance with respect to the way, but it is not affecting a butter's rights of passing over and use of the way. The Kolyak truck is about fourteen hundred feet. A more practical access point to the estate lot lies in the southeast corner of the Kolyak property where it busts Stere Drive. While the private road dead ends at the Kolyak property line, there is no limitation with respect to the length of Stere Drive as there is with Meadow Lane. The intersection of Stere Drive and the Kolyak property is shown on the estate lot plan revision dated nine twenty twenty-two, but the road is not clear identified as. A more cynical observer might think this omission to have been an intentional effort to deprive the board of the relevant access information. We request that the Suffolk Planning Board abide by the terms of its waiver order as step forward on the face of the nineteen then subdivision plan, uh, and limit the use of the invented Meadow Lane to the lot number specified in that waiver. If further hearings on this matter are scheduled, we would be most appreciative of being advised at the same. Sincerely, Michael. Okay. Um. Any board questions or comments on that?
I just make one comment. The Stere Drive is not an accepted public way.
And I, I was reading along with you, Mike, on here. And it's i- if I'm reading the lawyer's words here as a quote, is the waiver is requirement for the maximum length of eight hundred feet, et cetera, for Meadow Lane to service lots thirty-four through thirty-six, comma thirty-nine through forty-four. He's identifying this lot as lot number forty does not not fall within numbers thirty-nine through forty-four.
I think, uh, say that again, Jessica. Say that last part again.
The, the quote from our waiver states this has been granted to allow for the extension of Meadow Lane to service lots thirty-four through thirty-six, comma thirty-nine through forty-four. Attorney Parker identifies the lot in question as lot number forty.
I know.
Number forty not fall within numbers thirty-nine to forty-four?
No, that's Fred Filios's property. This is not, this is not part of the subdivision, so it's not identified as a lot.
Okay, so it's not lot number forty?
No, that's the Filios property, twenty-three Meadow Lane.
Thank you for the clarification.
Um. Okay, uh, any other board questions or comments?
No, yeah.
Alright, um, any town officials have any questions or comments? And seeing none here, none, uh, any like questions or comments? Mr. Filios, just the name and address.
Fred Filios, twenty-three Meadow Lane. Um, I, uh, I think the letters says what it says. Uh, I have to point out one thing I've done. Builders and homeowners alike are in five oh three lines on the unaffilled orders of the board. In this case, the provision that the use of Meadow Lane would not be extended further in the seventy quarters of lots twenty, thirty-nine, and forty. Um, this, I think. I'm not an attorney. And what I'm about to say maybe please. But, um, that seems to indicate that there is a certain responsibility on the part of um, the town, Suffolk. That, uh, if there's if this is violated and, you know, there's some um, negative result because of it, um, what it all along is, or something like that, there is a certain liability perhaps or responsibility, which, again, I'm not an attorney. But, um, that does sort of carry me when uh, a board makes a decision, the town signs off on it and everything, because you know there ought to be some responsibility there. And the title of the town to abide by. And if they don't abide by it, then I don't know what the legal limitations there are. And I'd also like to point out, um, ano- another thing about the, uh, there. Um. Easement.
Mr. Filios, I'm sorry, this is true. Would you mind coming a little bit closer? I imagine this microphone has a hard deck. Okay, we do have a member.
Uh, that, that, there's an easement, um, of some kind. I'm not exactly sure what kind. I don't know if it's an electric easement or. I imagine it was an easement to build a road. Because, uh, that seemed to be the intention of having that sixty-foot area there at the end of Meadow Lane. Um.
Okay, I can almost assure you, Mr. Filios, that was the reason. I mean, that's why these are done this way is they're paper roads. So you can continue on if you want to do further development.
Right, so that may have been the, okay, I guess you go on that. And, uh, and I, uh, took a walk from the end of Stere down as far as I can go um, to a place. By the way, I know Holy does not want people on this property. I knew that I was going to run into the property at some point. And I thought I would see, you know, signs, um, you know, indicating that there was, uh, not to trespass. You know, that kind of thing. I saw those signs. But I did see a very large area of clearing, which I assumed must have been part of this property. And, um, and I'm way down there, I pretty much followed that easement. And all through the easement, there were trees marked with an X. Big black X, which is usually what is done with that tree is going to be cut down. And, um, I looked on the outside the easement area and there were no black X's. Okay, just on that easement area. So, um, I was seem to me that that Holy has some plans for that. Um. And, uh, I wonder if the board has any knowledge of what that's all about?
No.
Well, um, it might be an idea to ask um, to find out. Um. You know, if that is the case, then, um, perhaps there's some um, plan of what? Some sort to use that and make it, et cetera, et cetera.
So, Mr. Filios, let me ask you a question, having read that lawyer's letter.
Yeah.
My understanding of your objection was primarily due to there being farm animals and, and, uh, on the property, um, in the neighborhood. You did not necessarily, if they wanted to build a single-family house in that location without any farm animals, you didn't necessarily have an issue with it. Is that fair to say?
I I, I don't know, honestly. Um, I, I, um. I mean, there's a lot of issues involved. Okay, uh, one of them is, um, the logging. Now Meadow Lane is a logging road. Um, it was not built for that and is suffering due to it. It was already suffering prior. You know, um, but, uh, the logging machinery and the, and the big, um, trucks bearing all the logs are, you know.
That has nothing to do with what we're here about today.
What?
That has nothing to do with what we're here about today.
That may be, but it's, uh, it does kind of, um, reflect on part of this letter where, uh, he talks about, um.
Mr. Kolyak has a state-issued permit for what he's doing with the logging on that property. So that has nothing to do with what we're here about today.
Okay, I'm not talking about the logging on the property. That's not my, what I'm talking about today. What I'm talking about is to use a Meadow Lane as a logging road for which it is not built. Okay.
We're not talking about logging. Where do you think the logs on those trucks are coming from?
Oh, they're coming from the property.
Okay, which he has a permit to do.
Right, but does he have a permit to use Meadow Lane as a logging road?
Yeah. That is not a planning board issue, nor is it why we are here today. So I just asked you to confine your comments to why we are here today.
Well, I'd like to respectfully disagree with you. I think that's a lot to do with the position of the road where I'm on and, um, and my property as respect to that and the value of the property also. I think has quite different. But I would bet that and respectfully, I will stop talking about it, okay?
I, I, again, I just asked that we confine to the issues that are here before us today.
Well, I think that is part of the issue. I'd like to respectfully disagree with you, and I would like that on record.
It is.
Okay. Um. We don't get along very well, do we?
Mr. Filios. I, I.
Okay.
I would like to maybe get this moving, please, if you can.
Sure. Well, I think that's all I have to say. Um, I, I would, oh, there is one other thing, is that since this is a new plan, I would like that there be a continuance so that we may review it.
There's a building put on it, which is what we talked about and was pointed out at the last meeting. So I do not think that that is necessary, um, to be done and.
Somehow I thought you would say that.
Um. You're welcome to come on up and look at these big plans right here, and I can point out the one addition that they've had.
Well, you know, I would like to have a professional one.
Um.
Okay, that would be needed to continue. But if you don't see what's the grand continuing, which I pretty much expected, um, then I will have to live with that for much.
Alright, any other comments?
No.
Thank you. Um, any other public comments? Questions? Anything on Zoom? Thank you. Just state your name and, um, uh, address when you, when you get up here, please. Thank you. If you just come up a little bit, the speakers.
And, um, I retire so I won't lie. And I can't believe the number of trees that have been moved back over by our house all the time. The heavy, heavy trucks, big, long trucks.
Man, that's not why, I can't say it enough. That's not why we're here tonight. It's out of our control. It's not our issue.
I simply want to emphasize too that this is an enormous project.
But again, the amount of tree clearing necessary for a single-family home is not an enormous project. It happens all the time in towns everywhere. That's a separate issue. Your issue is with the state logging permit that Mr. Kolyak has.
Yes.
That's not our issue.
Okay.
It's not something we can do.
The size of this project and the impact it's going to have. That's it. That's all I have to say.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I didn't catch the, the name. Thank you so much.
Um, any other public questions or comments? Is there anything on Zoom? I don't see anything. Before we close it, any other board questions or comments? Online or in person?
We said to the fact there's a valid town who wrote, town shut the road.
What is?
Stair drive. All the access metals, which is an accepted problem.
I mean, I'll just say this. I, I don't. Meadow is.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know about staring. But.
He met, he met Meadow.
Um. But I, I, at the same time, I don't, the issue that seems to be raised as the primary issue is the sort of um, keeping of farm animals in that area, uh, making them go off and stare it. You can put the house in the exact same location and put the animals, oh, anywhere you want right there. Um, a- and it doesn't solve the problem in any way, shape, or form, other than the fact that you're not accessing metal land. So I don't really understand the argument.
And a tree cutting is approved by the state, I mean.
It's not, it's not our issue. Okay, so, um, I will, um, like your motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
Marcus Phelps will move. Richard Singer second.
Uh, do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Singer, aye. Dave Spina, aye.
Okay. So we have a written decision which has been circulated or is in front of you. Have you seen it? Okay. Okay, that's all right. Well, um, we're gonna go over this. We'll go through it. Um, it's just sort of a um. Uh, a template to um, you know, would be. We've done it on the tax break, which is exactly granting the permits and then you work your way back whether you want conditions and then you vote on it up or down. So we'll go through that uh, after we get through. A and R and this avenue which. And actually, no, a couple of things, but we're getting to that. Uh. All right. Eight o'clock. One fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue, our favorite.
Stone Water.
Water management. Um, I think it's, I don't even limit to that. It's my favorite application. Continue public hearing. Uh, so. I don't even know how long this has been going on, um, but we need to sort of move this along sooner rather than later. Um, where do we stand right now?
I'm going to make a few administrative comments uh, at the moment. Uh, Mr. Hill is uh, attending, he's zooming tonight. He's the project engineer. That's okay. Uh, for this application, um, I'll note that we have a member absent tonight um, in the.
Oh, that's right.
The conduct uh, under the previous bylaw was to manage this in the same fashion as a special product. So uh, if I limit my notes to administrative comments.
Thank you.
Without uh, project uh, presentation from Mr. Hill, then we can uh, keep uh, the missing vote intact. As we start to pile up beyond the one that's allowed.
Did he already have one allowed?
Yeah.
Yes, that's why if we say administrative comments.
We're not gonna take any public comments. We're not gonna do a board deliberation or discussion. We're just gonna, you know, do little things here.
I wouldn't have enough.
Well, if we talked about.
If we. Yeah, we're gonna have to nip it off. Again, but uh, what do you, John?
So uh, I did speak uh, with Mr. Hill. We are going to be circling back this Thursday morning. Um, as he has a few revision points that he would like to uh, confirm. Prior to marching forward. It's uh, but it's a expectation that with that meeting. And some feedback, you'll be able to wrap up the comment response that we're currently working on. Um, and allow it to be circulated back over to D W Director. So that comes in November twenty ninth meeting. We would hopefully be ready for action.
What I would ask, and I don't care if you want to put it in discussion. Or just in your parents' report on the first is to give us an update about. But.
Given the.
Was there anything else administrative that we wanted to deal with before we move to continue it?
No.
What is the time of the?
That's fine. Uh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, twenty nine is wide open.
Yeah, wide open.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna. I'm gonna have good thoughts about this and we're gonna put it on for seven ten on November twenty ninth. Um, do I hear a motion to continue this to seven ten? Which would throw off our entire meeting if it's continued. On November twenty nine.
Marcus Phelps.
Do I hear a second?
Richard, sing a second.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
You're trying to sing your eye.
Dave Spina, I. All right. Thank you, Darren. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
A and R. Wanna bust that out and take a look at it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I don't have this digital. Give me one second. There we go. Okay. Uh, going back roughly a year, um, and perhaps even further, I think, uh, there was some coordination. This was last week. Jennifer Taylor stopped by the planning office. I would probably mention some passing of. Property on Congamon Road. Uh, is adjacent to other extended family lands and on the back portion of her property is existing. Utilities. Originally, the destruction was, you know, effectively stood off there. Some zone issues that's happening. Uh, which has led to the production of the drawing that she passed you. See here today. But we are looking at land swap information. Fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-one Congamon Road. Where there is a portion of. Your acreage can date to number fifty-one, which is a Taylor residence. Yeah, we're, we're expanding upon that. Only adding length to this uh, and. In his adequate front, he's all, all the parts of that is from the satisfied getting in front of.
Any questions or comments from the board members?
Are there any issues because of the zone? Only going through the property there?
Only that, that rear um, the utility building behind the Taylor residence um, can't be utilized for commercial purpose.
It was Franny Hart's garage.
Right. Perhaps once upon a time.
So now it's been abandoned. Be sure, be sure his age, be sure his age.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Uh, and uh, Mrs. Taylor also made, made reference to the fact that I think. Uh, Mr. Phelps has some firsthand knowledge about this neighborhood, so.
Very firsthand.
So nonetheless, uh, yes, the strip of residential um, zone along Congamon Road is what prevents you so that form of commercial building.
So the remaining land. For Hart, it's got fifty feet on Congamon plus another hundred and fifty point six six.
That's correct.
Okay.
She's what they have. And that's not changing.
Right.
Right. That being the zone line just being.
So that's gonna maintain their function.
Here is what's added to the. Yes, uh, this and all this. Just this.
I got it. Okay, this part is two.
Yes.
This is.
Yes, this is only adding.
Okay.
What they have and I want and part of the discussion. It is only violation for the remaining acreage.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have no problem.
Okay.
Marcus Phelps to make a motion to endorse the approval not required plan.
Um, do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
You're trying to sing your eye.
Dave Spina, I.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next is the discussion of Greens West subdivision acceptance of past security and release of remaining lots under covenant. In lieu of bond. I'm gonna turn it to you because you have the knowledge of this this.
Yes. We're picking up. A broader discussion we had at the last meeting regarding the form of security. For the remaining infrastructure work and some administrative costs over at the Greens West. Uh, since our last meeting, uh, the developer has deposited. Uh, funded amount of thirty thousand dollars with the uh, with the treasurer's office. Uh, and so the request for the planning board is to release lots, the eighteen remaining two lots. Uh, in the covenant, um, and we will bond for the Greens West subdivision. So to that end. We do have a document that needs to be endorsed that essentially monuments what the thirty thousand dollars means. Um, and everybody's responsibility related to it. Um, and then there's also the document that releases um, the developer from obligations under that legal covenant. So. In. Having reviewed this with town council. We have a couple of, I'm going to classify them as minor modifications. That regrettably, uh, being out of the office today tended to, uh, sit child. I don't have those typed up, but let's talk about what they are. So the feedback from town council is that the request. Should be amended such that the planning board is releasing the lots from the covenant or the covenant remaining in place. There's language within the covenant that pertains to the maintenance obligations. Which is part and parcel of what we were discussing um, at the previous meeting, but this isn't the. Right opportunity or step to fully release the develop developer from those obligations that's subject to. Uh, a separate step. So the modification uh, to that request should be to just release those lots. From the covenant and allow the covenant then to remain in place by separate, at a different point in time from when. They are shifting the burden of maintenance, ongoing maintenance onto the town. That's it in a nutshell. Boiled down to just a few words, uh, isn't anything simple, right? Can't anything be uh, picked into us now, but we can pull up the documents if anybody wants to see what they are.
How many lots are remaining, John?
Two. Coincidentally, we uh. Two, we were looking at.
Two with the common driveway?
Okay, let me zoom in a little bit. I forget. It's hard to read on students. All right, pardon my uh. Working copy here as I do my best to um, hammer in as much as I can while preparing big language speaks. Mother by, take a walk down. You have the references to the covenant with bond. Uh, oh, and some type those two, skip past those, but you can see that uh, Terry Bigland is looking for a citation of uh, from D P W. Um, of correspondence going back to June at this point in time. For uh, the dollar amount and then the board made a motion um, for the amount of thirty thousand dollars at that meeting. And monument that uh, so that will be exhibit A attached to this decision. Uh, and then the next paragraph, uh, we see that you're always have posted security. And sufficient enough to complete the power works during, but by the engineering department, from the book works of the planning board. And whereas Yori is still bound by the covenants to maintain the streets wave and public improvements in the greens of Southwest. Until such time as recent programs are accepted as public waves.
So we gotta cross out engineering department again?
Yes, there are.
Second, whereas.
Absolutely.
Amendment. And I guess my. I don't necessarily wanna. Let. An argument about the road acceptance process. Get in the way of. Releasing these lots from the covenant so that they can be, they can be sold and, and. Think my inclination would be to. Go on it, get that done and then move on to the next issue, um, you know, and deal with that in a separate. After the discussion with Mark about. These things. Um, I don't think it, it's just more a placeholder than the ultimate decision in my mind, but. Uh, let me just at least give me one second, so. Uh, any, any comments from the board on this?
That therefore section doesn't read very well.
You want to change some stuff on it?
And we never put in the amount thirty thousand anywhere. I don't see it there. We don't need to.
Should be there for the finding of the what is at the posted security.
Is the posted security of thirty thousand dollars shall be accepted.
I think you should do it as a, and provide it up as, is that. Of the planning board is that A, the posted security shall be accepted and B, the following lots uh, that um. You know, you can just write lots, was it fifteen and eighteen um. uh, which remain in the covenant, some which remain subject to the covenant in lieu of bond shall be in here, shall be in hereby are released.
And you're not including a dollar amount.
Uh, no, we'll put in, I would put in the thirty. Well.
I would think it would come after security that read security posted security of
thirty K.
Thirty thousand dollars.
I think you might want to delete that it is at the end of the prior paragraph. If you're gonna keep the is after planning board.
A being something additional B.
Unfortunately, I did not keep up with Mike's uh, speech.
Right.
Portion, so we're coming back. Sort of the therefore paragraph to say, uh, A, the posted credit, there does probably said it in.
They got following. Lots remaining subject to the covenant in lieu of bond, but comma after bond. Specifically lots fifteen and eighteen shall be in here by our release. That make sense?
Yes, is a better place to insert the last sentence. Then tagged on to the. So the comment was that the they go on many paths and we look at what may or may not happen, likely or unlikely, but the idea of that um, providing the privilege of the town to pull from the thirty thousand dollars um, to cover maintenance costs. Should that come to that?
Will there be a snow plowing agreement from the select board on that?
That is that is a good question. I believe that's part of current. That's the current angle um, or approach angle of what's being taken by a developer um, have been able to wrap up business.
But we want the thirty thousand dollars is the cover to punch list.
Yeah.
Not for maintenance. Right.
This is correct.
Exhibit A, exhibit A totals uh, thirty thousand?
Exhibit A, actually I believe was all the price was, I think it was twenty four and we made a recommendation that thirty thousand dollars should be adequate.
I would just strike that last sentence.
I agree. If you want to just hang on to a whole thirty.
We want to protect our interests.
Sure, it's better. Understand.
Yeah, all right, so I think that's fine. Um. Well.
Like on any area.
I would write then, and so is that A, the focus security of thirty five thousand dollars shall be accepted as as security. For any remaining. It just doesn't tie, it just doesn't tie back to that paragraph. I put in a comma. Well, that tied that back to the pair of the front of it and then the lots remaining are released. Make sense?
May I ask a question?
You may.
The uh, the, the words in remaining covenants, does that um, the desire to have the covenants remaining, well, but there's no security specific for it, even though the covenant remains in effect for those maintenance obligations, just without collateral. Perhaps I lucked my way around, but essentially we're releasing the collateral.
Taking out all security. To satisfy and any remaining uh, to, to be the security for any remaining covenants. Because there is a covenant to complete and maintain the satisfaction of DPW. All road sidewalk utilities and improvements, drainage facilities and associated structures. Prior to the basis. Uh, prior to issuance of events.
You know, I thought the thirty thousand was tied to the exhibit A, which was a punch list, right?
Yeah, but they, uh, it, this is I don't like being drawn into a fight that we shouldn't be fighting and they're not involved in, um, so I'm trying to honey.
I'm gonna offer a counterpoint to what I started with.
Argue again.
As I, as I, as I, I positive that the release of collateral from the covenant, as we're describing here, isn't releasing the developer's obligation under that covenant. It's just taking away the collateral. Oh, I'm sorry, shifting it to a different format.
Yes.
Yeah, we're changing the security, the form of the security.
So the security still remains, but whatever concerns town council may have for the maintenance component under the covenant, that remains because we're not releasing the covenant through this specific action.
So.
How's that for a?
I, I think what we want to say in the last paragraph. Uh, so A is fine. B should be the lots remaining subject to the covenant in lieu of bonds, which is lots fifteen, eighteen shall be and hereby are released from uh, really released. You say released from the sales, from the sale restriction of the covenant in lieu of bond. And it's no definition of what they're being released from, right? I just released from the covenant, but I might just put that way. Any other questions or comments on that? Just I think either that it is
Oh, yeah.
Or the is after planning board, I think one, one of those wants to go. Now, what are we, what are we doing here?
Yeah, that.
Uh, over to me.
Why is that?
Was that there?
Oh my, it was ever port, it's gone now.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose you could put it before or after therefore, right? It is the finding of planning board, but um, I think on the event that is after planning board that. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, that it is.
I'm, I'm so delighted you guys can get so far in the region. It's good, the language is important.
I would just, you might want to just um, in the paragraph you're on right, or that right there where you had the it is at the top of that, just indicate what the security is again in the whereas section as well as the therefore section. So as posted security and amount. Um, well, I would, no, no, I would keep that, keep it one again, in sufficient amount to complete the required. It's supposed to be security of thirty thousand dollars. Comma.
Oops. Couldn't say a thing about that stuff, but. What's the mouthpad on the thing we could?
Oh, is it just waiting?
I think it's programmed to shut off at uh, nine o'clock. I think something's tied into something.
Which is which was determined to be a suspicion. All right. All right, anybody have any other?
Looks good. There's a second half uh, to this.
You're just holding that. All right.
That's another document.
Oh, the um, the acceptance of the thirty.
Yes.
Yeah, just pull that up now in case we need to try and paste or change anything. We can look forward to them before we sign off on.
Oh gosh, so here we're I would not only does this need to be signed uh, by Jason as the developer, but I may look to the board so that such as, when the language is modified, the town council satisfaction and should Jason uh, choose to endorse. Let me move forward.
What's doctrine?
This talking, I'm sorry, I'm not sharing with anybody.
Yeah.
Fairly, so that release manages that and however the treasury, we need to assign purpose to the thirty thousand dollars. And regrettably, going into the hour of the conversation, this is at the course of even our last.
I, I'm not, I, I'm.
Or shall we simply get this buttoned up and then next to the, when we meet again?
I would, I, my preference would is really writing this much for this? Um. All right, hold on. Uh, man. Uh, can you zoom in on that for me?
Yeah.
I thought it was gonna be two sentences.
Can we defer this till next week? Uh, what's going on?
Well, I appreciate what's ever the last. Bring things a little bit, a button up, but.
I, I'm I keep uh, scroll down. Thank you. Is Jason saying this?
He has not. There is the other.
So we're defying this because this is not, there's no point in having this discussion tonight without having this input on it. I mean, here's my feeling about it generally. It's not, this is not planning, but it's like, and so I don't want to get into it. The thirty thousand dollars is to substitute a security for the lots, period. It's one sentence. I, I don't want to get from a planning board standpoint. I don't want to get further into it than that. That's my opinion. So you can pass that on to Mark. And I'm not sure how much more you're gonna get Jason sign. So, but, and we have thirty thousand sitting there with the treasure, so we have to do something about it. Yes.
Understand what you're saying. With that being said, understanding the position, where would the fight go or didn't fight, but where would the conversation go at the top side?
Yeah, I shouldn't refer to it as a fight.
That's a good word, the conversation. Yes.
A lot of dialogue regarding this and um, covenant in lieu of bond, posting of bond. On both sides to try to put up a performance bond at this point, it is now posted by Gashon, which the council of balls. All these documents are being provided after the fact.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why I look at it very simply, which is what, right now you have a covenant in lieu of bond, which is filed with the registry of deeds.
Correct.
Whatever that says and covers, it's an issue for the lawyers, not me, not in my role as planning board chair. Um, the The. Security that is being posted of thirty thousand dollars in my mind is simply. A substitution of money. For lots. Period. The end. Whatever the language in that covenant is, whatever it covers, whether it covers maintenance, whether it covers, I don't know what. It's an issue for the town council and, and David, I don't know, the, the David chair is still involved, but. They can fight about it or now have a conversation about it.
That's better.
But it's not, it's not a planning board issue. From my standpoint, from the planning board. I guess we did approve the covenant at some point through town council. So I, you know, we approved the covenant and we do have to do the actual substitution, but to me it's a, it's a very simple. Substitution. The scope of it, I don't want to get, like I said, I don't want to. Get into having a position on the planning board. It's. It's others who have a position about it. So we do have the benefit of a quick turnaround with the November first meeting. So we'll get this over to Jason. We can look at it. David can look at it. We can just see if we can have a little back and forth conversation in the next week and maybe. Figure out if we can get something to at least accomplish this to define what the security is there for.
Our, I understand that one consciously one hundred percent completed. I think we need to come in for a thirty thousand dollar on the lease. But the issue realized that we can't go right into the maintenance on because we don't have.
And you are outside the. Pay grade of, of this group right here. They're kind of, it, it just, it, it's just outside of what, I mean, that's, that's a discussion for town council to have. I, I just.
There's trouble.
It's not, it's not our place. I don't believe to, to jump into that. So. You know, it's not much to. I'm okay with the, I'm okay with the other document and, and executing that.
The first one.
That accomplishes getting that out of it. And we can deal, let's let everybody. Jump in the boat on the other one and we'll talk about it on November first.
Everyone keeps, keep it simple.
Good luck.
All right. So can you just flip over to the other document so that it's at least up when we're voting on it and then we can vote on that. First and then kick out that other thing for the next meeting.
Wonderful. Appreciate it. Thoughts?
All right, release of covenant in exchange for. Release of. Release of lots. Any other changes before we vote on it? Right here, a motion to reject this release of lots in covenant in exchange for cash deposit.
Dave Spina moved. We're just taking a second.
The roll call vote, Michael dirty, I.
Marcus Phelps, sorry.
We're just singer, Ryan.
Dave Spina, I.
So is this for me to sign? The house. Designed or is it for the board to sign?
It is for the board.
All right. While we're here, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Okay. Next, just to spice it up. We're gonna hop into the nifty.
Well, let's talk about parking lots.
Randy is dear, his state on. Disipation. Well, let's wait to see if he actually.
We don't have a picture of Randy, so we don't know.
Be fair, he was diligently.
Oh, geez.
A couple hours ago, so. All right.
How are you, Randy?
You are on mute, Randy, if you want to unmute yourself.
Good, thank you.
So nifties, let's discuss. I, I don't know who wants to start this, John or you, Randy?
Well. Heck, Randy, why don't I at least give a, a better than update? Because this always falls in an opportune slot in, in the evening. So back in June, we received the recommendations. From Fosn O'Neil and a report. Looking at both our zoning bylaws as well as subdivision regulations to identify barriers. To. Low impact development techniques. On doing infrastructure goals. And so in doing so, board members may recall a nice spreadsheet they put together color coded saying, hey, where we comply with, we'll call it the, the standard. Under the. Under the stormwater determine if the town operates, where we need improvement and where perhaps if we identified direct barriers. So Randy, we talked a little bit about some of the coordination that took place with the firefighting, because I believe you engaged them. Excuse me, and get the. Chief Anderson directly to discuss. What. Recurred fire apparatus needs for maneuvering. I think you might have phrased that and saying, are there any obstacles to going to a smaller radius? I mean, Randy, have you?
Yeah, that's correct. I, I.
Go ahead.
No, I, so there's, so there's, there's many, I don't know if you, how, how in depth you looked at this report from Fosn O'Neil, there's, there's a lot of components to it. There's, I think, twenty five, thirty pages to it. Lot of recommendations or potential recommendations, I guess, but one, one item was regarding the size of cul-de-sacs. Not only the size of cul-de-sacs, but the, the configuration of a cul-de-sac. So right now our, our current bylaw regulates a cul-de-sac cast three hundred foot diameter in size, period. So one option would be to look at a, either a smaller diameter cul-de-sac to allow for a small diameter cul-de-sac. Or to allow for a different configuration. In move a cul-de-sac such as like a T or a Y. And to a, to a dead end road. So I took that one item, I, I wanted to talk to fire chief to ask, okay, what are you looking for, for, you know, if you need to. Send your fire apparatus to end of a cul-de-sac, what kind of space do you need? I wouldn't want to recommend something that obviously they couldn't accommodate. So the fire chief seemed to think in, in this one item, he seemed to think that, you know, we remade a slightly smaller diameter cul-de-sac, kept it the, the, the circle shape, circle circular shape cul-de-sac. But reduce it to ninety foot diameter that, that would be suitable for their purposes. So that'd be one thing that, you know, one of these recommendations that maybe I'd be looking at. Asking the, the planning board to, to consider if we do make any bylaw changes.
Yeah, hold on one second, Randy. I'm just trying to. Look at this. So the first one is good, the second one is, I'm sorry, the first one is optimal, then good, then active barrier. And this is on page five, I think. This, so.
The cul-de-sacs is on page five, yes.
All right. So the optimal. Minimum required radius optimal would be less than thirty five feet. Are you reading that right?
Yeah, yeah, radius versus diameter. So this would be seventy foot diameter.
And then good would be less than forty eight, so that would be ninety six. And then. Whatever that other bad one is, would be a hundred and one. All right. And so you. They're okay with ninety?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right. All right. So that falls within that range of. Optimal, the good.
Yeah, and just to clarify, these optimal versus good. Versus active barrier categories. I don't think they're written anywhere in the, in the net fees permit. These are more just general best practices that, that are out there. So these, we don't have to meet all of these optimal standards, you know, a lot of these probably don't fit Southlick.
That's a fair point.
But these are just, you know. It, it, I think it's intended to make us think about our bylaws and how can we best find. A path towards those optimal categories if, if, if it's possible.
Yep.
Okay, so this shows up in our chapter three fifteen regulations. We have some drawings.
Yes, yes, for, if you're speaking at the cul-de-sacs, yes, there is a, there is a detail for a typical cul-de-sac.
So regulations are easier to change than bylaws, so. That would be doable.
Randy, are there other ones that you would highlight as being? It's sort of at the top of the list to be funded.
Well, if you, if you look at the first page, page three, they talk about roadway widths. So right now we have a minimum paved width of thirty feet for collector streets and twenty six feet for local streets. Now we do allow for narrower widths in subdivisions for a flexible subdivision. But not conventional, from what I understand. So maybe allowing for a narrow width. Under that category. I guess I, I don't want to. I guess my thought for tonight's meeting anyways was to kind of get a flavor of the board. If there would be an opportunity to make some, say, make some of these modifications. And, and what I could do is come back to you with a list.
Yeah, that's fine.
And identify which I think would be appropriate. This, I, I wouldn't recommend everything that's in this list here. That is, this is too, too burdensome, I believe. But I think there are some things in here that we definitely can, we definitely can move forward with, in my, in my opinion.
Okay, so. I think. We have some stuff we still got to clean up this year. But I think it may make sense and we can have a discussion about whether to make it broader than just this, but I think it's probably worthwhile to put. Beginning of next year. Open up a public hearing on three fifteen. Start discussing. At a minimum this. But I do think there's room to discuss. A lot more about it and just sort of re-review it and talk about process and get. Get some more, get some more. Concreteness to the process and get it updated. So I think it's part of a broader discussion. So maybe. Randy, unless you see an issue with the timeframe from D C W standpoint, I think that would be our inclination to start. A public hearing at beginning of next year at some point and start this discussion.
I think we'll have some results from the master plan also, the various chapters, one of which is infrastructure and transportation, so.
Yep. We can incorporate.
They have some specific recommendations on.
Yep.
Stuff.
Yeah, I think that's an opportune time for us as well. So that'd be fine. That'd be good.
All right. And if in the meantime, sort of in lead up to it, if there are, as you go through it, you know, if you can prioritize ones that make sense, more sense to you than others. To sort of focus board members of the, as to your opinion, that would be helpful, certainly.
Sure, I can do that.
All right. I mean, it's certainly not going to be a short public hearing, so we're gonna have plenty of time through it, but. You know, any prep in advance. Okay. Thank you, Randy. I appreciate the time.
Yeah, thank you.
And hell of a job coaching tonight. You, you know, kids were spaced. It was, there were some crisp passes. It was nice. Good to watch. You had Pat there. Pat actually showed up. It was, it was, you had some help. It was good.
We're making good progress. Thank you.
All right. Depot Square, stormwater farm reduction request somewhere in this pile of stuff. I have a request to continue this. Alexandra, if you're still on there, I just, because we do have a quick turnaround for November first, I want to make sure that that's acceptable. Though if she has left, that is. I think she's still there.
She's there.
Yeah, but she may have stepped away. Oh, so.
Did she ask for the first?
Next planning board agenda, like I said, just because we do typically two years, but we're doing one week. Why don't we just put it on at least and we can always continue it. It's just. So, all right. So.
They just have some data compiling.
Okay. So we'll move that on that. Routine business. Coastside Road Metal Lane Estate Lot Special Permit Decision. You want to pull that up?
Sure.
Fantastic. Or no, you know what?
If you, if you prefer, you want, it's like watching someone drive. I respect that.
I have some. Change that I want to make so it's.
Understood.
Give me a second. Would you please include that?
A public hearing has already been closed.
Oh, I know. That means I have, I just have to shut up.
It just, I. I wouldn't put it that way, but it's, as far as any kind of evidence for a public hearing that's already been closed, so it can't be accepted and considered by the board in this, in this process.
That's all right. It will be considered on deal.
It actually won't, but that's fine. So.
I might just say that I appreciate John sending it out. The decision out ahead of time, so. If we could look it over briefly and. Add some ideas as the, the content.
And I concluded my discussion with attorney Doug Lane on other matters. You've seen it earlier, but you're welcome to put that one.
I'll have to go. Okay. So. So before we go through it. It's probably worth a discussion a little bit about this so that we can kind of have our. Thoughts. Jessica, a voting member on this or no? Jessica, are you? I can't remember.
You got to scroll down a little ways for procedural history.
Yes, she was. Okay. Okay, all right. She is, all right, so, um. So this is just sort of a template, sort of put stuff in and discuss it as we go along, it's not meant to be a. Any kind of opinion of anybody, it's just sort of a, a general acceptance of an estate plan. To be changed as needed. My personal thinking of this, having thought about it now a bunch for the last handfuls, is. That Southbrook is a right to farm community, that is sort of the default. For any property in Southwick, um, under uh bylaws. Doesn't mean that that applies to every property law, um. In this particular case, you, they're coming to us. For an estate lot, that's a discretionary permit by the planning board. They are applying for an estate lot that is coming off. A street that is part of a subdivision. Which has. As they are. Have a legal right to do, establish covenants um and restrictions that uh apply to. The properties in that development. Under. The law, to my understanding. Covenants and restrictions. Are. I don't know the right word, probably by defaults, effective for thirty years. Um, they can be extended by. The vote of all property owners. To whom those covenants and restrictions apply. Um, but the sort of requirement, I think, is that they are, they end after thirty years. My understanding. Is that. The covenant and restrictions applicable to those properties adjacent to where this would be. Here to have been filed in nineteen ninety-five, so. You still have a few more years of, of, and not to represent that that's exactly, but. Looking at the document online, that appears to be one of his files with the registry. So. Having said that, it strikes me that. If. A property owner. Um, wants to come off of a lot, of a street that is part of a subdivision that has covenants and restrictions actively. Applicable to it. I think that that property owner should be subject to those same. Covenants and restrictions. To the extent that those are. If those covenants and restrictions are no longer active. I don't see a reason why that property owner should be subject to a higher set of restrictions that other property owners. In that subdivision would not be subject to, right, and so if if these are not renewed in some way, in. Twenty twenty-six, property owner can purchase property on Meadow Lane and. Do whatever they, you know, whatever's allowed in that is. Ignoring the covenants and restrictions, because they're no longer. So, I think I've come to the viewpoint that. If you want to come off of a subdivision street, a subdivision that has. Collectively agreed to these covenants and restrictions, I think if they are still active, you have an obligation to abide by those. And so it would, a- as of now, I think that those are active, I think they would apply. It would be up to the homeowners if they're going to extend them. Um, but I, you know, I think that that will be part of what I will put in as a condition to this. Uh, Randy, a state lot, I think you can have a state lot, I don't see an issue with that, but I think, I think it has to be. Subject to any active covenants and restrictions that are applicable to that. So that's where I've sort of landed on this. Um, you know, I just. I think that takes into account all the legal rights of the various parties, right, you have a legal right. Uh, right to farm under this, under the bylaw, but you also have a legal right. Um, as a, as a subdivision developer to put in covenants and restrictions where you don't want certain things to be part of that. Subdivision, and that's what we're chosen here, so I think you have to sort of try to marry those two things, and to me, that's the solution. But I'll let anybody else on the board offer any comments or questions as they see fit.
Is the method to extend those restrictions, is that codified anywhere?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I can gra- um, I don't remember the case name off the top of my head, so. And I don't do this for work, um, so I don't know it well, but my understanding is that the Supreme Judicial Court. Uh, looked at this issue not that long ago, and um, I forget how they got there, I think there is some other. Statutory law about the thirty-year um conditions, and sort of said that applies to these covenants and restrictions unless, you know. Um, uh unless they're extended in some way, so I think the case law. Does tell you the process, uh, to large degree, um, but it's not, it's not codified. I think there, I think it's sort of set out there, is my understanding, um. It seemed a little out of left field to sort of apply it that way, but it probably was percolating in the, in the, that area of the law. You know, but I didn't know. So. Yeah.
Where are you pulling the requirement? For this particular parcel to adhere to the subdivision, just the fact that it's an access off the street?
Yeah, I, it, you know, where I've come down is that the, the properties adjacent to this, um. Are subject to restrictive covenants um that are still in effect. You're gonna come off of that street, if you're choosing to come off of that street and add in basically another. Home off of that subdivision, I don't see a reason why. You shouldn't be subject to any active covenants that apply to that, to those other properties off of that street.
Isn't it usually based upon the land parcel, not the access point? Don't whenever we're talking about a subdivision, aren't we always talking about a particular parcel?
I, I don't.
Like if we're talking about the Greens West and there's a particular parcel where the access point is off College Highway versus Sawgrass Lane, would we? You know, that particular parcel is actually part of the Sawgrass Lane development. Whereas this just happens to be a parcel adjacent to, and the most convenient form of access. Is this particular street. Whereas we would, if we were trying to push it towards stair or some other access point, we're talking about. A ton more trees being cut down and much more extensive logging, I just, I don't. If we wouldn't normally consider. A particular parcel as part of a subdivision, if this wasn't developed as part of that subdivision, it was specifically left off. I don't wanna add in additional restrictions to somebody just because that's happens to be where they pull in. They didn't agree to that covenant, they're not part of a subdivision, they didn't buy a subdivided lot, and it purchased it from that developer. At least that's my understanding. And as a right to farm community, I wouldn't wanna impose a restriction that oversteps or makes that step on a. Whoa, well, because it comes off of that street, we're gonna hedge our bets and play the safe card.
Hey, this is uh Bert Hanson, can I uh, can I say something?
Uh, no, actually, Bert, we're outside of the, um.
Okay.
Board deliberation, so, uh.
Okay. Okay.
I'm gonna assume that you were gonna talk about the right to farm, uh, but this is just the board deliberation part of this, but thank you.
So Michael, if. If a covenant. Imposes certain things on this property, and it's not the intention of the property owner. Uh, to comply with that, who, you know, what trumps which, I mean, we are forty, we have. Certain uses of the land that are allowed, but you're saying a covenant from that. That applies to the subdivision lots would apply to this property.
So let's just start with this, this is not a, a lot or a currently buildable lot. You can't walk onto this right now and build a house. If you could do that, that may be a different issue, I mean, they wouldn't have, well, it would be totally different issue, because they wouldn't have to come in here and get a permit, but. This is not a buildable lot as it stands right now, they need a permit, it's a discretionary estate lot permit from the board. And so, I, I, I appreciate that. This is not, wasn't considered part of the subdivision, but at the same time, it was. You know, as most of these are, you leave an access point so that you, if you want to do further development, you can access it. This is basically a paper road to get to a, a further development. They now, that hasn't come to fruition in any way, shape or form, so now they want to develop this as a single family house, that's fine, but I don't. I think there's some. E- equity at play, that if you have. Made the choice at the subdivision to live by these covenants and restrictions, which you have the right to do. And someone coming in for an estate lot, coming off of that, basically adding a lot to that. Subdivision should have to live by those same restrictions if they're active, it doesn't, you know, if they, if they become inactive. Then they're inactive.
Well, I was gonna, that's kind of going along the line of my, what I was thinking is. They would become reenacted or even changed or modified, or I assume by a vote of the homeowners association. Which.
As best I understand, all the property, any property owner that is subject to those covenants and restrictions, which. As best I can tell, is not the entirety of Meadow Lane. There may be two sets of covenants that the one applies to the first part and one applies to the second part, but the. And I was focused on the one that applies to the second part, because that's the closest to the, to this property. That one, I, I think it applies to like half of Meadow.
Okay.
Um, so, I mean, I, I.
Yeah, I guess what I'm worried about is that if this property is to be bound by those covenants, but not necessarily able to vote on those covenants, or be represented in the. Modification or extension of those covenants, then that seems to be a problem.
So, and that's where I'm struggling, because if you give them a vote, it's a poison pill, because you need a hundred percent to extend. Right, so if you give them a vote, it's a, it's a complete poison.
Yeah.
It, it's one vote trumps all, all the others. So, I'm struggling with how to write that and how to pursue that, but I, I do think that. I don't think that, um, if you want to come off of a subdivision road, you have the right to do whatever you want. And you don't have to live by the conditions that everybody else in that subdivision knows by.
But the problem is for. Each house for lots. Is it for the roads too, or just the lodges, I mean, what, what did they sign up for?
The, 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 um.
They signed up for all, all the acreage period, or just for each lot?
The, the, the cup, the restrictive covenants that apply are sort of. Lot building specific covenants, right, they are.
So wouldn't Mr. Kuliak have a issue if we're imposing something onto his land that wasn't part of the sale of his land when he purchased it? And it said this is part of a subdivision, and in order to, to buy this lot, you have to meet the requirements of, of these conditions and. These restrictive covenants, I would think that that would be something that would need to be disclosed as part of the land, and do we as a planning board have the legal authority to impose those restrictions on that land? Post-purchase?
Purchase was as of a lot that was not a, a true buildable lot. That's what he purchased, he doesn't, he doesn't have frontage to build on that lot.
And but you would assume, though, that if it was part of anything in, in some sort of legal. Hold, that it would have to adhere to these things, that that lot would have to have that attached to it, whether it was buildable or not. And, and I think it would be a real um shysty move by us as a planning board to impose it. On the landowner post, I wouldn't, I, that's.
I just don't think you have this automatic right to an estate lot permit.
No, you don't, but we also shouldn't be, um, shouldn't let our flags wave in the wind. On it either, and impose restrictions on somebody like that. Especially when we're not talking about a house that's right on the frontage, that it's gonna be visible. They're not asking to put in a huge farm, they're asking for the legal, for the basic rights for a few animals. And in our right to farm community, I don't think we should be. Reaching to prevent it in this case. It's just how I am on that.
Yeah, we, well, uh, yeah, I would not be comfortable with moving forward on any condition like that.
You're okay, Rudy, and I'm.
I would prefer to uh see what the covenants are and what ones. We might specifically look at, that was reasonable to, to require, to condition.
Well, I think before I even impose any of the covenants on this lot, there'd have to be something that was says that. They have voting rights, whatever you wanna call it, because I don't see any difference than if I buy a, if I buy a house that's in a subdivision. That's been out there for twenty-eight years and whatever, I bide my time for two years, but then if I wanna do whatever I wanna do. That the covenants currently don't allow, I wait, and then when the time comes, I vote against it, covenants expire. There you go.
Yeah, this is a new one.
You know, and if we're going to enfo- enforce them via our decision to adhere to the. Um, subdivision rules, are we also then issuing by our decision the demand that they start paying HOA fees? And are mandatory part of that, and then I don't know enough about HOA voting. Um, but if, as you, if it is, as you say, a one-vote tank. Then by forcing Mr. Kuliak onto the rest of Meadow Lane's group. And HOA, then we're basically tanking their own restrictions. Okay, sure, we'll, we'll keep the animals away for a couple of years, but then in a couple of years, Mr. Kuliak will vote down. Your no animals bylaw, and you'll be stuck with them. Everywhere on Meadow Lane, not just this one lot, where he's keeping them away from you, where they're not in your face. Where the house is clearly not part of a six hundred thousand plus home subdivision, you know. This is a unique. Location.
I, I, I mean, I don't. Just because it has a bit of a driveway to the house, I don't, I, it's still part of the subdivision, I mean, it's still. I don't know, I just see it as. Uh, and to be fair, and put all. Biases on the table, I live in a subdivision, right, so, you know, I mean, it, maybe that's playing into it, but. It seems like it's attempt to have the best of both worlds in a subdivision, where you get the, the benefits of the subdivision while also. Um, just carving out any of the sort of. Restrictions that you may consider negative of the subdivision and getting the freedom to do what you want with your property, you know, under the, under a sort of. Standard, um, property rights in Southwick, um, so, you're, you're getting.
Up into your property, driving down a really long street to your property?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I don't know, I consider benefits, I consider my neighborhood to be, to be. Have benefits of the subdivision, right, you can go and walk around in there pretty easily, you have, um.
Human access.
You have neighbors right there, you have. You have neighbors right there, you have, I mean, I think that there's benefits to that. Um, and you're getting those benefits while also saying, I don't, any of the sort of restrictions that would go with this, I don't want any of those, so. Let's get rid of those, but give me the benefits of having, living in this. Connecting to.
If I was a buyer, this would have been the parcel that I would have looked at and said, perfect. Right, so. We can't, we can't, I don't, you know.
We can copy that and read about and come back next week and discuss it better than that.
We can, I mean, I, it's, I'm not. There's no point in trying to work through a decision if we're not going to get anywhere tonight, especially when it's nine thirty five. Um, so if people need more time to sort of think through stuff. Like I said, I mean, it took me a while to get to where I was and I totally understand where Jessica's going to go as well. So. Um, like people need more time for it, that's fine.
I'm a little spoiled, yeah, pop this.
Alright, does it, does it make sense to pick it up a week?
I think we should move through some of this, at least get some of it done. But part, because it takes us like two hours.
That's.
To get through stuff, let's go proceed here at least.
Sections obviously.
We're just not gonna vote on a decision. Correct, or if we vote on a decision, it has to be with some covenants that we're all going to agree that we can include.
Correct, I mean, I, again, again, I, you know, I think that. I don't profess to have found the perfect solution to this, but. Um, I hate the sort of constraints of these open meetings to some degree and how we have produced up. And so the best way I've found is to sort of create a decision granting the permit. And then work through it with any conditions and get to the point where you want to vote on it and then either vote it up or down, right? And that's, that's the only best way I, I figured out how to do it because you.
We need to see those.
If you don't have a written decision in front of you when you vote, there's an issue with whether your written decision reflects your vote properly, so. Anyway, so let's quickly, um, get through some of the. History stuff and findings, I suppose, um.
Marcus, this won't have the ones that you shared earlier today.
Oh, it won't.
We will not.
Oh, they weren't that major. Oh, yeah.
Well, you'll have the opportunity next week to.
Yeah, you can add those in.
Alright. Um, anybody have any issue with, uh? The, let's see. Alright, so the procedural history. Any changes to paragraphs one through five of the procedural history?
Was it closed on?
Just while I was, I'm missing from part five.
Was it closed on October twenty fifth?
Yes, that's what that was. So something can actually. Well. Alright, we'll figure that out. Um, I'll leave that there.
Yeah, a number five, I was suggesting a modification, uh, we have that standard. That we put in, if you weren't at the meeting, you could complete a affidavit or whatever.
Yeah.
Because I missed the one meeting, but I did listen to the, uh. Recording and submitted a. Specific, uh, I don't know.
I don't know, I'll give this one, but we'll go, we'll go back and make sure.
It's just a boilerplate. States didn't list specific names.
Yeah, no, we can, and that's, um.
And John, no.
Alright, findings, anything in the section A general that needs to be changed or any comments or questions about it?
Do we want to say specifically the forest cutting plan? They've got to have some kind of a number or something. John, you include.
I know where you took it from.
It did a couple of times. Sixty feet of frontage.
Alright, anything with one through four?
Okay, oh.
Yes.
Uh, for number four, the site will be served by Meadow Lane, which is an accepted public way.
Didn't want to steal your thunder, Marcus.
Just spread it.
Alright, special permit criteria. One through six. Um, and again, I, you know, think through these. Wherever your head is at. How you want to do this, but, um, good conditions. And we'll revisit this quickly next week, well. Make sure nothing needs to be changed.
Alright, number one, it says that proposed use is. Soon located in the neighborhood. Assuming that it fall under jurisdiction of the covenant.
Well, I think it's broader than that, Mark, uh, Dick, it's, you know, the, the proposed use of a single family residence. Is. Is suitably located in that area because it's, it's R forty and. Can be provided an estate lot permit.
Out in the R forty zone.
Yeah, the covenant does not the bylaw, so I think it's, I think generally. If on a, on a more general level, it's except it's, a single family residence is allowed. State law permit for a single family residence is allowed in that district. I think that's all it's saying. Um, I don't think we need to dive down into the weeds in this section for that. You know, I think this is a broader level, single family residence type discussion up here, and then you kind of deal with conditions. You know, there may be one or two of these that condition is, or and I don't remember seeing one, but maybe. Uh, anything with one through six?
Sign regulations?
It's, it's a, um.
Is that part of the estate lot one too?
It's, it's part of, uh, seventeen, right, uh, one through seventeen of one.
Well, if they had a customary home occupation, they would be allowed to have a small sign.
I mean.
Uh, some kind, but it's.
You have to make the.
Minimal, very minimal.
Um, to issue a special permit regardless of whether it's. At a state lot or not, any special permit has to meet those seventeen criteria. Or you have to make findings on those seventeen criteria. Anything through, uh, let's see, seven through sixteen. Let me know and. Touch on seventeen here and then we can jump to the. Specific finding. Alright, um. Specific findings, one through. Seven. Anything on one through seven of a specific finding?
I think one is a useful one to have in there because it is a low density. At one time there was, uh, subdivision. Projected to go on that property, which would have. You know, generated a lot more traffic. And the impact on the environment with septic systems, because they would have had to have wells and septic. There's no public sewer up there.
Yep, because I see it approved, approved subdivision. Connect, I think, I can't remember if it connected to Meadow.
And never, it, it was never approved, so, certain.
It was approved, it just didn't, it got.
Well, they were gonna, they were gonna. Connect to a sunny side road.
I thought the one coming off of, um, Gunn's property was going to connect to Meadow, but I could be wrong.
No, yeah, it was. Go up Hickory Lane and then continue on up to Meadow.
Yeah, that was approved.
No. They withdrew it. I believe.
In Land Court after the appeal. I think it never got out of Land Court, if I remember. I think you all, uh, that's the final one. Um, but anyway, um.
Anyway, number one's cool, very good.
Is number five correctly, the less one, Aker?
If it's recorded, yeah. Timed out.
Alright, um, decision is just the standard. The waiver from us.
They'll even, yeah, give rid of that, uh.
Yeah. Terms and conditions. One is. Same. Always put in.
Whoa, going faster.
Well, I, if you haven't seen one before.
But I don't want to see more grinding road again somewhere. See it one more time. I guarantee you, we'll see it one more time.
Mike already got the second one.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, stuck it in.
Yeah.
Bottom screen.
Yeah, before you guys looked at. Corrected it.
I'm glad we're getting a final hard copy of this.
Alright, are we good with one, Marcus?
Yes, okay, I wrote it, uh, ten years ago.
Uh, two through five, anybody have any? Questions or comments on those? Like two standards probably written by Marcus.
Yeah.
Very standard issue by, written by Marcus.
I went to a class and came back and re- rewrote it all.
For standard.
What's that now, number five?
Think about how much a, a pirate truck.
Alright, um.
Probably change the date, of course. On the laps of the special permit. Leave it blank. Well, you can leave in twenty twenty four, maybe.
Alright, anybody have any issues with the rest of these? Alright, so that would be the standard state law. Permit. Okay. So, um.
And, and you went past terms and conditions, right? We didn't do anything on that. That's, did we have anything?
We didn't have anything that was real specific, I mean, they largely don't. You know, they're pretty.
No, but you're saying we may, we may include.
Correct. Look at what you need to look at and we can talk about that.
Got it, yeah. In one week.
Yeah. Alright. Nine fifty one, we got nine minutes.
What? Nine minutes.
Uh, comprehensive impact statement handbook, vote to approve or adopt. Uh, final version has been. We got to the final point, I think, you had the last timer. So we just need to do the formal vote to adopt this. Do I hear? Any motion?
Marcus Phelps make a motion to adopt the comprehensive impact statement handbook.
We'll do a real call vote, Michael's already high.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Alright, that's all set, uh, you might as well just keep this copy with you so that you have something to refer to when it comes up. Uh, before it ever, it will be put onto the website though, so you can also access it.
I'm sorry.
Uh, okay, McCory Drive and Foley Way acceptance process, but we're not.
Which, which version date are we, did we just vote on?
October fourth.
Ten, four, twenty two.
That included all five of the fiscal impacts at the end?
Uh, let's see, I don't know. Yes, five.
Did that not come out?
Doesn't look like it did, so I, that's why I'm, I'm confused.
Hold on, hold on, yeah, let's get the version. Hold on, hold on, yeah, let's get the version.
When you emailed to me earlier, John, includes all five. With that date of ten four.
That's right, so I was typing, uh, those changes. And I'm afraid that I would have to go back with. Change that was not.
Yeah, I'm looking at, you know. I'm looking at mine, yeah. So, let's, um, let's defer on that. And let's make, make sure that we know.
So I have to make a motion to reconsider my vote?
Yeah, well, yeah, we can do.
Somebody hacked into, uh, no.
Uh, so.
Never happened.
Sorry, Diane.
We'll do a motion to, uh. Uh, withdraw that. Approval.
Yep.
Your motion.
Marcus Phelps moves to withdraw the approval of the comprehensive impact statement handbook dated. October fourth, twenty twenty two.
Do I hear a second?
Dave's being a second.
Roll call vote, Michael's already aye.
Marcus Phelps aye.
Dave's been aye. Um, John, you and I get together, I have my notes thing in. That's what I was looking at, um, okay.
So it's on the next week's agenda.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll almost take that one off.
Uh, master plan advisory committee update, Marcus.
Yes, we had, uh, two visioning sessions, October thirteenth and October fifteenth. We had about twenty to thirty people attending. It's a hybrid format, so we had two live breakout groups in the auditorium town hall. And we had one online. And, uh, Mr. Goddard and Mr. Kameya worked magic and, uh. We got it all together, they were two hour meetings, I looked at both the time. Uh, stamps and one was hair over two minute or two hours, the other one was like an hour and fifty eight minutes. So now we move on to something called focus groups. Which are, uh, more technically orientated, uh, will be soliciting. Names of, uh. Experts in the various areas. So John will be sending a call letter out to the. Planning advisory committee and getting other people to be on those, but they're usually, I don't know, maybe ten people on a focus group. Uh, the next, uh, meeting of the advisory committee is November seventeenth. And, uh, we expect, I would expect to start seeing draft chapters. Of the master plan. And our housing plan in particular. John and I need to sit down and go over the. Work plan that we had. Set up with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and see where. Where they are. Time wise. And, uh, we do have additional money that we got from the state, so we need to. Develop another. Phase. Of the process, which would take us through into next spring. It's going good. We had nine hundred responses to the survey.
That's a good. Dick, short term rental subcommittee updates.
We're actually done, passing it off to the planning board to solve all our problems, we took a vote. Most people were in favor of it. I passed it off just so we can get some issues resolved by the board. So basically, we're all done with that, the recommended revenue, this is a wonderful job, we put him in charge of all the committees.
Something we should put on for our next meeting or something we should.
Hasn't been passed on yet, hasn't been passed over yet?
Not just yet.
Okay.
Alright, we'll probably put it on for the end of November and take it up then, um, it's not gonna end up on a. Special time meeting anyway, so.
Yeah, it's, it's always a good, it's best work. Work can be done.
Yep, okay.
We're something.
Alright. Minutes, everybody take a look at the minutes. Yes? Fair enough. Did you look at the minutes? Are you sure we defer on that?
Let's defer.
Defer, alright. Nine fifty nine.
Feel good.
Uh, did you look at them, Jessica?
Yeah, they're completely fine, they're perfect. I never say that, I never say that.
I, I mean, I looked at them, they were, they were. Now, I'll make a motion to that, then, alright, um. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael's already aye.
Marcus Phelps abstained.
Dave's been aye. Alright. You know, we were gonna end at nine fifty nine, so, now, now we're gonna end, now we're gonna be late. Alright, um. Who wants to take over, Dave Suttons?
I will make a motion to adjourn, alright.
Alright, everybody in favor?
Yes.
Alright, alright.